We will go ahead and call the meeting to order and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Commissioner West.
Here.
Commissioner Gomash.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
First item is tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Is it?
Second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Brassad, second by Commissioner Schulte. Further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Then we have the review of checks issued from Finance and Central Services and from Human Services. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Is it?
Second.
Moved and seconded, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. We have approval of minutes from our February 16th County Board meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is it second?
Second.
Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. We have no items under Chair's remarks today. We'll move directly into committee reports. The Management Committee report, Commissioner West.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have three item, action items, and 1A is a new position in Human Services Committee, Health and Environmental Services, non-budgeted contingent. It's a .8 FTE, case aid specialist, grade 10. And this is funded through state dollars.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is it second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, further discussion. Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
1B is to refund Human Services Job Training Center. It's not provided for in the budget and it's due to a vacancy due to a promotion. And this is also funded with 100% state and federal grant revenues. There would be no county expense.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is it second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gomash. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
And the last item is a new position in Human Services Community Corrections. It's non-compliment and contingent upon the return of a regular employee who's gone for a medical leave of absence.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is it second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Motion carries.
That concludes my report. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner West. Moving on to Transportation Committee report, Commissioner Schulte.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our committee met on February 29th, 9:00 AM here in the Government Center. We have some items under highway to consider, first being the committee recommends approval of a resolution authorizing the preparation of a highway right-of-way plat for the County Road 79 reconstruct overlay project from Seventh Avenue to Round Lake Boulevard in the cities of Anoka and Coon Rapids.
Is there an offer of resolution?
I'll move.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Look. There's further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Item two, the committee recommends approval of a license agreement with Richard J. Zaccardi Jr. and Geraldine D. Zaccardi for their well to be located within the county right-of-way in conjunction with the construction of a roundabout at the intersection of Broadway Avenue and Kettle River Boulevard in the city of Columbus.
I'll move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Madam Chair, can I just ask a question?
Absolutely.
Clarification. Which property we, on this, on this map, I just was kind of curious. I'm assuming their well has already been there for a long period of time and we just have to get this straightened out for them.
Doug?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gomash, County Board members, my name is Doug Fisher. I'm the county engineer and Transportation Division manager. The Zaccardis own the property here in the northeast quadrant and they have a well on the west side of their home. Actually, their wellhead is not actually in our permanent fee-owned right-of-way, but we have an easement beyond that. So it's in that easement area that it is. And again, during the right-of-way process, there was some problems with some of the legal descriptions that when we were buying it and we ended up doing a land swap. And so, again, it's out of the permanent fee title right-of-way. It's in an easement area. It's not going to be a hazard and, again, not worth the cost of relocating their well just because it's in that, that easement outside that area.
No, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, next item.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If it pleases the board, I'd like to take item three and four together. They're essentially, the wording is the same, they're two different contract numbers, C triple zero, 1891 and C triple zero, 1892. They're contracts with our federal consultants, both John R. Brimzik and Miller Wenhold Capital Strategies. And the committee recommends approval of these purchase service agreements for professional services to assist with public affairs relating to the designation of federal discretionary highway funds for improvements to Trunk Highway 10 and the I-35 corridor, highway railroad grade separation projects and other projects as requested by the county. Each of these contracts earn the amount of $60,000. And we would further authorize the chair of the county board and the county administrator to execute said agreement, subject to review by the county attorney, as to form and legality.
Is there a motion to approve items three and four?
I'll move it.
Is it second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner?
Just for the record, I think it's C triple zero, 4891 and 4892.
Yep, that's correct.
That what everyone has on theirs? Okay. Not a big deal. Hard to see, hard to see.
Well, and I, well, we'll explain later. Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I can just comment on this, we've had opportunity to work extensively with John Brimzik and Miller Wenhold and out in Washington DC, and they do just a fantastic job for us. We, as we go out and we need to meet with our Minnesota delegation, they're always able to have the representative or the senator meet with us as opposed to perhaps our staff members. You know, they're really effective at penetrating and getting, you know, getting the people in front of us. So they've done a great job. I know that Miller represents the cabs out there. We use Uber. Hopefully, we won't hold that against them, but they, they really have done a fantastic job for us and given us a heads up on what's going on in DC and how can we be most effective at what we're trying to get accomplished. So definitely earned their money.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
And Madam Chair, item five, the committee recommends approval to increase a contract by $665,000 due to construction overages to a total of $6,156,021.83 for the pavement rehabilitation and bituminous overlay program consisting of 14 county roadway segments throughout Anoka County. I would move approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair, I would say that, you know, this is called contract overages, but in actuality, it's adding additional projects to the original contract. Pavement densities and ride qualities were much better, so there's incentives within the contracts for the contractors and many of them did that for us. They really improved their projects, our projects, by improving those and hence the increase of 665,000.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
The committee recommends approval to increase a contract by $135,000 to a total of $1,389,407.1. And to make final payment to Forest Lake Contracting for the construction of a roundabout at the intersection of Broadway and Kettle River Boulevard in the city of Columbus.
I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair, just want to comment, and I don't know if I've made this comment before at a meeting, but this project came out really good. The locals up there, most people are a little bit reluctant to roundabouts when they first see them or start engaging in them. This one is receiving grave reviews because of its design, because of the detail that Anoka County and the contractor put into both signage and the size of the roundabout. And you could probably comment even more because it's in your neck of the woods and your constituents have more direct contact with you than I.
And thank you, Commissioner. That is exactly what I've heard from constituents that don't necessar, there are some that really are not fans of roundabouts. And part of it is just not understanding how to utilize them, where to go. And their comment was they had no problem because the signage was so good and laid out so well. So hats off to our staff and the contractor for, I think, really doing a good job in showing that roundabouts can be done right. And I think it's something that we can be very proud of. All right, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
The committee recommends award of contract to Reliable Tree Service Incorporated based on their low bid of $93,690 for the tree clearing removal for project on Bunker Lake Boulevard from Crane Street to 1,200 feet east of Butternut Street in the cities of Andover and Amlake.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make that.
Is it? Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Gomash, second by Commissioner Brassad. Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner?
Just a quick heads up for our constituents in that area. Tree clearing tends to be one of the more problematic or at least visual problems of a, of a road project. It's the one thing that tugs at their heartstrings as they see some beautiful old trees coming down. And, and, you know, as you clear, clear the right-of-way for these road projects, it's, it's a little wider than most people think is necessary, but because there's federal dollars in these projects, we have to have the clear zone completely clear. So as these trees come down, you may receive calls from your constituents and just please assure them we're taking no more than is absolutely legally necessary to take. And it will become a very safe project because of that.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner.
Just a question for Doug. There's, Reliable came in with a really nice bid for us. Have we used them before?
Doug?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Gomash, actually, at the Transportation Committee, I said we hadn't used them. And we hadn't as a prime contractor on a contract. But they have been used as a subcontractor on some of our other reconstruction projects, on the University Avenue reconstruction in Blaine and Coon Rapids that's wrapping up. They were the subcontractor on that. They're somewhat of an offshoot of Revard Tree Service, so they've done excellent work. Revard does excellent work, obviously, and they've done excellent work as a subcontractor. So we're very pleased with the bid. And this work is, assuming that contracts are signed and insurance is in place, begin next week with the actual tree clearing.
Okay, just follow up. The reason I was asking was because the project that we did on bunker, what, two years ago now, and some of the tree clearing was under review from some city council members and things like that. And when it got done, everybody could see that it wasn't, you know, deforestation. It was clearing as it should be and looks great. And I was just wondering if they were the same, same folks that were working on it, just to maybe alleviate, you know, some people's concerns because as Commissioner Schulte indicated, they take what, we take what we need to take and no more than that. But at the same time, if you look at past projects, and the recent one would be on the, on the east, on the west side on bunker, heading into Anoka and Ramsey, that turned out really well. So.
Okay, roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
The committee recommends award of a contract to Egan Companies based on their low bid of $166,855 for the traffic signal interconnect project at various locations throughout Anoka County. I would move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been seconded by Commissioner Gomash. Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Just one more step in a very exciting process. It's a long time coming, but as we get these signals interconnected with fiber, then we'll be able to hook up our Centrac system, which will have a computer algorithm to make sure people get through our county safely and faster.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Madam Chair, there's two minor informational items there you can look at when you get a chance. Other than that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Schulte. We'll move on to Intergovernmental Community Relations Committee report and Committee Chair report. Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee recommends the county board support the efforts of the national state treasurers by signing a letter to preserve the tax-exempt status of municipal bonds. The committee agreed to including a statement on the letter that the Intergovernmental and Community Relations Committee of Anoka County, excuse me, supports this issue.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Is it second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
The committee recommends the county board encourage the federal legislative delegation to support the introduction of a Senate companion legislation to HR 2209, which is bipartisan legislation that will classify all investment-grade securities as high-quality liquid assets.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Is it second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
The committee recommends the county board adopt Resolution 2016 IG 01, supporting principles for the reform of the Metropolitan Council.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Okay, resolution has been offered. And I think just to give a little background, there's been a group of suburban counties that have met since last year. We also brought in city representation as well to come up with a list of guiding principles that will take a look at any legislation that's proposed this session to take a look at Met Council reform. And this is really a bipartisan effort. If you go back to, it was 2011 even, when Governor Pawlenty was in office, the same group of counties came together and were looking at Met Council reform, just because we are the only metropolitan planning organization in the nation that has no elected representation serving on it. Minnesota had an exemption in federal law, kind of a grandfathering clause that existed. So we're very unique and there's been, I think, a lot of concern over the years and those concerns continue. So as a result, I think that we took a look at really what communities' input was. We also took a look at the Legislative Auditor's Report from 2011 and some of the recommendations from there. So with that, our list of guiding principles include that a majority of the members of the Metropolitan Council should be elected officials appointed from cities and counties within the region, that metropolitan cities should directly control the appointment process for the city representatives to the Met Council, that metropolitan counties shall directly appoint their own representative to the Metropolitan Council, that the terms of office for any Metropolitan Council members appointed by the governor should be staggered and not coterminous with the governor, membership on the Metropolitan Council shall include representation from every metropolitan county government, and that the Metropolitan Council shall represent the entire region. Therefore, voting should be structured based on population and incorporated systems of checks and balances. I think the feeling was that it's important for the Metropolitan Council to actually be accountable to the citizens of the region rather than have a constituency of one which currently exists with the governor, really ends up operating as a state agency without true legislative oversight. So this is what we came up with. And there's been a number of communities that have been passing resolutions of support as have the neighboring counties. And so that's why it's here before you today. Any additional comments or Commissioner Cordia?
I can't help but comment, Madam Chair. Some around me wonder whether I really support this proposal or not. But the fact of the matter is, I understand it. I get it. And I do support it. I've heard it going on for 30 years, so I understand the difficulty of navigating this discussion. But that doesn't make it any less worthy of pursuing. And maybe over the course of time, in good judgment, better wisdom will prevail, just to understand that.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schulte.
I would just reiterate the comment that our local governments truly are the closest to the people. They can be reached out to easily by all the constituents. They can get ahold of their city council members, their mayors, their county commissioners. So to have that representation on one of the most influential regional planning bodies or the most influential planning body in the area is critical. And the fact that these local governments, beyond county government, the city governments are passing these resolutions almost unanimously within their bodies, it shows that discontent with the current layout of the Met Council. So I would, I would echo all of your thoughts and comments that this is just something, it's time, it's been time for quite some time. It is not, it is completely bipartisan. There are as many Democrats as Republicans as nonpartisans that all support this legislation. So us passing this as a board, I think, sends a signal to our entire county and the cities in our county that we're serious about Met Council reform, that we think we can, we can form a better planning organization.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Look.
I just wanted to comment. I know some people hear that, you know, the talk of disbanding the Met Council, and that is nothing whatsoever involved in this. We, you'll never hear that from us. We believe in regional planning. It's important that you plan for growth, whether it's in roads or sewers, the need for parks or whatever the case may be. There has to be some sort of planning. And, and so it's, it doesn't ever touch on that issue. And the other thing is, is that although it kind of originated as a four-county group, we invited the cities in because we believe that the cities have as much, if not more, at stake than we do. And, and so there's some current legislation out there right now that doesn't specifically name cities. And we're in the process of encouraging them to add that in as cities because it's very important that we have them as partners moving forward in this. And they have every opportunity to contribute to the process. So just to clarify that point.
Thank you, Commissioner. Right, with that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Moving on to the Chair report.
Thank you. I would recommend the county board adopt Resolution 2016 IG 02, affirming Anoka County's endorsement of the revised county program aid formula developed by the Association of Minnesota Counties Program Aid Work Group.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Schulte. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Brassad. Now we'll move on to Parks and Community Services Committee report. Commissioner Cordiak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. John's nearby. Let me try and comment about these items. Item number one is regarding improvements that we'd like to make at Lake George Regional Park. It's a legacy-funded project. I recognize it's a well-utilized park and I think the roadways we'd like to improve have not been approved for many years. We had gone out for bids. As I recall, we had two bidders. ALID was the successful of the two. The pricing was good. I think we actually set out seven alternates in case pricing wasn't kind of where it should be. But we found that all of the alternates and bid came into the parameters that we anticipated for expense. We're doing a variety of projects. This is a mill and lay, not a replacement of the roadway. We also, of course, were able to do culverts and gut and curbs and trailways and similar pieces along with this project. So I'm pleased to bring it forward and I want to offer.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second.
Further discussion?
I've used the roadways in here, and if your boat isn't set on the rollers quite right, it will be by the time you get out. No, it's a, it's high time and, and much needed, so.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Secondarily, with the roadway improvements to 116, which we worked on long and hard and maybe long overdue, it includes a tunnel that carries pedestrian traffic underneath the roadway rather than on its surface. And everybody's glad to see that, part of a regional trail.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll make that.
Resolution has been offered by Commissioner Gamache. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
Thirdly, Madam Chair, I might ask John for you to carry this and this is an interesting piece, we talked about the park system, it's a proposal by the Minnesota Pollution Control, they're looking at promoting some of their own agendas initiatives and came to us with a proposal, John?
Thank you, Madam Chair, Commissioners, good morning, I'm John Von Delinde, Division Manager for Parks and Community Services. The Minnesota Green Corps program is a, is a program that's sponsored by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, it was launched in two thousand nine, so it's a fairly new program, it is statewide and it does partner with local units of government to promote conservation practices around the state. The funding for the program comes from Serve Minnesota and also the Corporation for National and Community Service, which are nonprofit organizations that support this program. The position, the program provides for 11-month fully funded positions, so they're limited term that come with the grant and they focus on a number of different areas, one of those that I think we're most interested in, that we reviewed with the Park and Community Services Committee is in the area of urban forestry. And in particular, we are focused in our application on a position that would actually begin to do some inventory and assessment of our ash trees within the county park system, we have 11,000 acres that we maintain, we know the Emerald Ash Borer is knocking at the door, we have had some identified areas within Anoka County Ham Lake, most recently, we're also in an area now that in the entire metro area, all of the seven counties are quarantined except Carver County and I understand that Wabashaw County was recently added to the list of infected sites, so this problem is moving east to west, we know that at some point it's going to become a devastating problem like oak wilt and like Dutch Elm disease were, so we're trying to set up the county to be more proactive, understand where those trees are and look at what the opportunities that might exist to partner with the business community to actually try to make these wood products that are going to need to be removed at some point merchantable either as firewood or as pallet wood or furniture wood or whatever, so we want to reach out to the business community as part of this process to see how we can best manage those resources. I think it also puts us in a better position going forward because I think at some point the state is probably going to get involved in financing efforts to deal with this problem statewide, I, I've got to believe that that's going to happen, just like it has with the other two diseases that I mentioned earlier, so I think it puts us in a better position going forward when the time comes to be able to, to move forward with programs both to remove and to manage and to try to, as I say, try to work with the local business community in, in trying to make lemonade out of lemons, which is really the scenario I think we're going to be dealing with here. So that's, that's the concept, that's the position that we're seeking and again, it would be fully funded through the, through the state.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Further discussion? Commissioner West.
Madam Chair, John, I'm wondering what is involved in the quarantine, I know for oak wilt, you had to keep it contained for a year or so, right? What do they do?
Well, in the case of Emerald Ash Borer, any ash trees that are, that are felled within Anoka County need to stay within Anoka County, they cannot be transported outside of Anoka County. And that would be true for all of the counties within those quarantine areas, you can't transport ash trees or byproducts of ash trees outside of those counties during this quarantine period. If you are moving wood from one portion of the state to another through the quarantine area, that's perfectly allowed, if you were to take down trees in Brainerd, for instance, and drop those off in Rochester coming through the Twin Cities, that would be fine, but you can't take trees that emanate out of the Twin Cities or these quarantine counties outside of those counties, so that's the distinction.
Is there a period of time?
At this point, it's, it's unlimited, so as long as the quarantine is in place, the movement of those products cannot occur, my guess is that that quarantine is going to stay in place for a very, very long time.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item.
And I think lastly, Madam Chair, we have a family who has suffered a loss, they would desire to place a memorial bench at Coon Rapids Dam Regional Trail, we have lots of trail, lots of river, lots of scenic overlooks and we have a specified cost for that, that they, that we might ask for and they understand that and they're happy to move forward, I'd like to offer Resolution twenty sixteen, whatever.
E R K oh six.
E R K six oh six.
Okay. The resolution has been offered by Commissioner Cordyak. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordyak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severajah.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And we made the items, well, always interesting, Madam Chair, are pretty straightforward and subject to future examination of the park systems, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Cordyak. Now we will move on to item nine, number nine, is to consider county board appointments for program year twenty sixteen related to the Association of Minnesota Counties, making some changes there, so Scott Schulte would be the, the representative on the AMC Board of Directors with Mia's alternate and also on the executive with Mia's alternate. Is there a motion to approve items nine A and B?
Both.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved by?
Both of us.
Commissioner Cordyak and second by Commissioner Brassad. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. I don't think that Teresa would allow a tie on that, so I had to.
Arm wrestle.
Okay, and the last item, committee appointments, consider appointing Virginia Isakos of the Library Board representing District Two for a three-year term expiring December 31st, 2018, is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And if there's nothing else to come before the county board, meeting is adjourned.